Good evening. Today is Monday, it is July 16, 2012, and I will call this meeting of the Norfolk City Council to order. This is an open meeting, and posted in the northwest corner of this room is the actual Open Meeting Act. We would ask that you would please stand and join with us in a moment of silence, and as well the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Coy.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Murren.
Brenneman.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
Saunders.
Here.
All right, under actions, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, as was provided you.
I'll move, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion with a second for approval of the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, I would request approval of the full agenda, as provided in your packet.
So I'll move, Your Honor. Second?
A motion with a second for approval of the full agenda. Again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. Let's get them right to the special presentation tonight, looking for an update on 25th Street.
Continue to make progress on 25th Street. I think we've opened up Norfolk Avenue since the last time we talked, in the area south of Norfolk Avenue. With that, we closed Prospect Avenue. They're working on street removal, some grading and utilities from Norfolk Avenue up over the hill to Hardeston. Quite a bit of work in that particular area, because we're lowering the top of the hill by the water tower about three feet, which means we've got to redo water system for four or five blocks in there, and we've got storm sewer all the way up the hill. They poured half of Maple Avenue today. Get the other half probably the end of the week. You can get into the park from the west using Hardeston and part of new 25th Street. And they continue to work on forming the bridge deck on the new bridge, so without it answering any questions anybody might have.
Any questions at all, council? Dennis, the only thing that's been raised to me was the question of those in the apartment complex coming out and that are driving across the church property. And I'm going to let you explain, that's actually part of the easement. If I'm not mistaken, I'm telling them that this is exactly how it was set to be, so there was a little concern.
You're right on track. The city acquired an easement from the church to provide for access from the apartments to get out to Norfolk Avenue. We discovered today that the access road is a little farther east than what was planned for, and I think so that their construction will, so they can phase their construction or actually do it, that that road's probably going to get moved on the other side of the power poles, or at least part of it will. They were running into some inlet construction that was going to cause some problems. But the city of Norfolk did acquire the right-of-way from the church across that. The city also paid for a new sign for the apartment complex, so if they see that coming out on the interim, the apartment was compensated for basically removing and replacing their sign.
Okay. Good to know. Thanks, Dennis. Anyone else?
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, then let's move on to public hearing. First is a public hearing at the request of Apex Enterprises LLC for approval of the final plan of the amendment to the amended Warren Plan Development. I will open this hearing, and Trent, if you want to give us explanation first.
This is a continuation of Warren Garage, looking at an expansion to their plan development that they have out there already, and basically for storage units. I guess later on, you're going to be, they're also asking for a waiver for hard surfacing. They have hard surfacing all the way up to where all their other prior parking is, and then where they're going to add on to that. So looking at 15 units initially, and possibly adding 28 more.
Okay. Any questions? Trent, at this point, council?
Trent, I have a question pertaining to the amendment, or for the pavement waiver. At such time that they add on to this, in the future, they plan to add more units, can we ask for that to be hard surfaced at that time?
I think they're all here, and they might be able to answer that question a little bit better on what their future's going to look like after that, but I think, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the waiver was for a permanent waiver for right now, just because that there's a large amount of hard surfacing already there.
I just, my line of thought was, we're going from 15 to possibly 33. That's a pretty considerable jump in traffic out there. It's rural right now, so the dust wouldn't be a problem. They're the only people out there right now, but at some point in time, that could change.
Sure. There are probably, I mean, they have to put an apron around the building that's going to be hard surfaced, so it's just, there's going to be a short area in between there. I don't know the exact distance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Trent at all? If not, then, as this is a public hearing, is there anyone that wants to come forward and speak to this issue? May have questions? If not, then, I will look for discussion among this group. Hearing nothing, then, do we have a planning commission report?
The preliminary plan development of the amendment to the amended Warren Plan Development was approved by the Planning Commission on May 22, 2012, and the City Council on June 4, 2012. The Warrens were granted a planned development in 2002 to relocate their garage business to South 37th Street. They then requested an amendment to the PD to allow larger signage. This request is to permit the erection of RV storage buildings. They plan on building 15 units initially, and potentially adding 28 more units. They are requesting a hard-surface waiver to allow for a gravel road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of this planned, final planned development on a seven to zero vote.
Okay, and with that, I will close this hearing, and then ask for a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5218 approving the final plan of the amendment to the amended Warren Plan Development.
Your Honor, I would introduce ordinance number 5218 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion at all? If not, Beth, we'll look for a short title.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska by revising a previously approved planned unit development plan, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, with that, would you please vote?
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5218 carries on first reading.
All right, moving forward, then. I would look for, let's see, consideration of resolution number 2012-25 approving a hard-surfacing waiver for Apex Enterprises LLC doing business as Warren Garage Door.
Your Honor, I would introduce resolution 2012-25.
Second.
A motion with a second. Is there any discussion on this at all? If not, then...
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Trent, if, did 5218 just pass on first reading?
Just on first. Can we do this?
Is it appropriate to have the hard-surfacing waiver before second, third reading on that? Or should that be tabled to wait until that catches up?
That's probably a good question. It probably should be tabled, actually.
I think it is. I mean, my view is that would be, my inclination would be that until you've actually completely amended, made the amendment to the amended plan development, you shouldn't be granting a hard-surfacing waiver for something that they're not authorized to do yet, and they won't be authorized to do that until you've considered it on second, third. Just a thought, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Could that be passed on second and third tonight?
Is there a reason that we should not? You can go ahead and...
I'll move that we...
Suspend?
Suspend the rules and approve ordinance number 5218 on second and third reading.
Do we not have an open motions that... We've got to do something on the action that we've got going first.
You understand what they're saying?
Yes, I understand.
I've got to back us up a minute, and, so what do we need to do on the opening of just...
I guess I would ask to table resolution 2012-25.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to table it, at this point.
Second.
With a second. If you would please vote. What we're going to have to do is table it, so that we can go back up and pass that first...
We never pass a table motion, or we never pass a...
They can just rescind their motion, if they don't have to table it.
Rescind it?
Just rescind it.
Rescind the motion in the second on resolution...
On the resolution.
...2012-25. If you want to go back and consider second, third reading.
All right, so who made the motion?
Just withdraw that resolution.
Just rescind your motion, if you would.
Well, I guess I'm not sure that I want to.
Okay, so you would like to see it...
I just wonder if there is a, if there's a big hurry to get this, I mean, are they ready to start digging dirt tomorrow, or this would wait two weeks?
Okay. Do you have concerns on that, Trent?
I necessarily don't.
Okay, well, Dale, it's your...
Well, I guess I would, I would move to rescind the motion, or the resolution.
Okay.
And Faust.
I have a second.
Okay, all right. So that being said, is there any further action that we need to take to be able to go back and look for Vicky to make her motion?
All right, I will suspend the rules, and move that we approve ordinance number, oh, sorry, number 5218 on second and third readings.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5218 on second and third. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5218 carries on second and third.
All right, and with that, now, we will jump to resolution number 2012-25 approving a hard-surface waiver for Apex Enterprises LLC doing business as Warren Garage Door.
Your Honor, I remove consideration of resolution 2012-25, I believe.
Right.
I'll second.
A motion with a second for approval of resolution 2012-25. Any further discussion? We do have a...
I'm curious about Councilman Coy's request on the hard-surfacing waiver and the length of duration. Is it for, you know, run consecutively, or is it for a period of time, or...
Once we pass it, it's unconditional, to my understanding. They could add 100 units out there, right?
All we're considering is the hard-surfacing of the approach. My understanding is that that could be brought back before this council at any time and rescind.
If it's a waiver, as a waiver?
Yeah.
I guess that's different than I understood what Trent said.
But, and a couple of things that I would lend the council on, on the, that we could request paving at any time, but it's only for, requested for 10-year period, as per the waiver application for right now.
The waiver.
So...
But even within that, 10 years?
That I'm referring back to council on, I guess, his opinion. Well, when I look at what is in the packet as resolution 2012-25, there isn't anything in there which grants the waiver for a period of time. Furthermore, when I look at 27-351, it says that the variation, modification, or waiver of surfacing requirements shall be for a specified period of time. So I think that the resolution that is in the packet is deficient in regard to that, and I think that you have a couple of options in regard to that. I think you can amend that resolution to, to put in a time period. I think that many times, these resolutions will say that notwithstanding the granting of the resolution, the council does reserve the opportunity, depending upon what happens with the nature of the area, to come back and to, and to reinstate the paving requirement. So I think it would be appropriate for you to either consider adding those provisions to this, or to table it, so that it can be maybe properly constituted in regard to both the ordinance which allows for it. They're probably not going to start by putting the pavement in any way that they're not planning to put in, so I think either of those would, would be appropriate for you to consider.
Could I ask a question? If we were to table this and do as council suggests, is that going to put any undue hardship on your moving ahead with the construction?
How long would that...
Two weeks, I would assume, two weeks.
Actually...
For the next council meeting, so...
The next council meeting, three weeks, because we got five Mondays.
But that, that wouldn't hinder their construction. That would only hinder the hard-surface waiver.
That's, that's my question, too.
No, I could still have, have the kind of dirt work, right?
Great, okay.
We've already passed that ordinance?
Okay, so are we looking for an amendment?
Well, I got a, what's the, what's the big deal here? I mean, what's the bottom line? Are we all concerned that we're going to have a huge development boom out there all of a sudden, and the gravel's going to drive everybody crazy? I mean, I'm just, that's my...
Well...
I guess my question is, is I don't know what's going to happen in 10 years, and we're going to release that mechanism to address that. I don't think there's, I don't foresee any problem.
Yeah.
But I guess I don't have a crystal ball.
Well, I would agree with Councilman Coy. I don't think we're going to look at having an issue out there, but I think in absence of having something definitive in the resolution, we're, we're not doing our due diligence.
But can we amend this and put it in tonight?
Tonight, yes.
We can keep it moving?
We can move forward.
I think that'd be the way to do it.
That would really be my concern, is the fact that we're passing a waiver for an indeterminate amount of time, and I think we should have a determinate amount of time, and I think the 10-year period was mentioned earlier on, and it would seem feasible to me to amend and apply a 10-year waiver for, for this hard surfacing.
So, Councilman, are you putting that in the form of the...
Can't.
I'm sorry?
Can't, because I haven't...
Where are we? You have a motion?
I have a motion to approve it, so I have...
You'd have to rescind your motion again.
I could either rescind my motion, or correct me if I'm wrong, Clint, I could make an amendment to my motion.
I think either of those would be appropriate.
Ed.
I guess, I guess I would ask the question with the Warrens, if maybe they want to discuss this a little bit. I mean, I hate to put them on the spot right here.
With this particular amendment to the, to it, if you're talking a 10-year amendment, would that be at, in 10 years, they'd be subject to paving? Or in 10 years, it'd be subject to review?
Review. Review.
So either way, I don't know if it's... I mean, yeah, it's, it's subject to review, but more than likely, you know, it's probably still going to be a gravel road out there in 10 years. I mean...
Mr. Warren, do you have anything that you want to come forward? Will you speak to us and let it be part of the record here, if you would, please?
I'm Jeff Warren. Another thing I thought about, too, is we own 20 acres out there, so we own everything, you know, to the south, to the west, that's already ours. You know, if it ever came such a time when we'd want to divide that up, we would want the concrete in there anyway. So I guess, you know, there's 300 feet of concrete right now, from the road back to where the edge of ours is, and then we're staked out for the building. There isn't very much distance, you know, between now, where you're going to come up the concrete to the gravel, plus then we have to have those 25-foot aprons out in front of the building on each side, because it's a drive-through, so there's, there's that concrete on each side of that building. So the amount of gravel's not going to be huge. You know, and we don't have, you know, the ground, I feel like, you know, that part of it is already ours, so as far as controlling the dust, I, I don't know, I don't think, you know, and as far as your question about the 100, which is what we're talking about now, is the 15, and then the possible 20 more, so there's not going to...
Right, but that's 43.
Right, but what we're talking about right now, it would not be 100.
Right.
You know, so, and I don't know, you know, how long it would be before it would be developed.
Right. And that, I think that it's going to be a great project. I'm just, I'm, I'm just leery of that mechanism, that we won't, once, if we pass this unconditionally, then it would be on your shoulders to be responsible, which I'm not saying you wouldn't be, but we have no mechanism as a governing body to control that.
Would you be comfortable, Jeff, with an amendment to, that we would, in 10 years, this would be subject to review for...
I think we probably would, because as long as it's like what, what you said, Shane, was just to come back, you know, and look at it again, you know, and see where we are. But, I mean, I don't know how long it would be before anything would ever get developed out there, that where it would ever be an issue.
Well, and, you know, Jeff, I hate to see you make a quick decision on this. I mean, there certainly is nothing that precludes us from giving you the opportunity to sit down with staff and...
Well, and, yeah, maybe I should, maybe we should just wait, because that's not going to affect...
Right.
You know, the fact that we could go ahead and start with the building part of it.
That's kind of my thought, that gives you, gives you a little time, and it doesn't impede you from moving forward.
That's probably what we should do, just, just table this, and that way we can talk about it. You know, I don't think it's a big, big thing.
Okay.
I guess the only other question I'd have for you, Jeff, is, because with a lot of these, from my remembering, anyway, from some of these earlier, that there were, it kind of caught me off-guard when I saw it, that there was no restrictions or anything to it. One is, you know, a time period, as, as Councilman Brenneman mentioned, and the other one has normally been a stipulation that it's, you know, that the council would have the authority to request paving being installed at some point in time. If things change drastically, say, you no longer own, own the 20 acres, and somebody else buys it, and they decide to do something considerably different, they're with a lot more storage, that we could ask for it to happen at that time, you know. Again, you say that it's not going to happen, but, you know, there's a lot of things that aren't never going to happen.
Well, I, and that, too, I think probably what we should do is, we could talk about it, and, you know, get back together then.
I think that's a great idea, Jeff, it just makes more sense, and then you can have your questions answered, too, thoroughly, so...
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, Clint, do you have to have a time limit in there?
Well, the section 27-351 says, "The variation, modification, or waiver of the surfacing requirements shall be for a specified period of time according to an approved, approved improvement plan and schedule prepared by the applicant, and shall be recorded in the office of the registered deeds." Now, you know, I think that, so, so it really should be for a period of time, and I really think that, that, and, and I really think that what happens is, it says it should be for 10 years, and then you're really required to pave it, or have another waiver request if it comes to that. I suspect that there are probably some of those out there where the waiver period's granted for a period of time, nobody cares, they aren't paved, and there isn't a new waiver, but the mechanism is there, as councils, members have talked, if there is a change that says that, you know, it might be something to be considered, you have the option to consider it. So I think you all end up in the same place either way, but it, to answer Dave's question, it does say that it should be for a set period, and this resolution that's on here doesn't have that on it.
So should we table it, or should we just take it off, so you can fix it, and then bring it back, or...
I think it would be appropriate to table it, and we will, we will talk with the planning staff to get an appropriate resolution on there.
Okay. Please make that statement for us, if you would, as well.
There's also a provision in 27-351, and there'll be a test later, that says, "Should a waiver be granted, any change in ownership or occupancy of the premises shall require a new waiver." So that it talks about if, if, you know, if there's a change in the, in the ownership, or a change in how it is that you're utilizing the property, and there's more, there's more traffic, more dust, more whatever, you have the opportunity to, you have the requirement to come in, and to re-ask the question, is paving, is the paving that was waived previously necessary? So that's what these sections say.
All right, Beth, remind me where we are right now.
We have a motion on the floor made by Jim, seconded by Jim Brenneman, Jim Langy, Jim Brenneman. They need to rescind it before we can...
Rescind the, rescind the motion to approve the resolution?
That's right.
Or table.
No, we need to rescind that first, and then we need to make a motion.
Have to rescind it first.
Okay.
Do we have to...
You rescind your motion, I'll rescind the second.
Under that being said, I would, at this time, rescind my motion for approval of the resolution.
All right.
I'll rescind it in a second.
All right.
Now we get a motion to table, if you'd like.
All right. So it is, we are, again, looking at 2012-25.
I'll make a motion to table 2012-25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table resolution number 2025. If no further discussion, let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion to table carries.
All right. Let's move on, then, to consideration of ordinance number 5219, authorizing issuance of $490,000 of various purpose bonds for permanent financing of paving districts 495, 501, 502, and water extension district 119.
I'll introduce ordinance 5219 on first reading.
Second that, Your Honor.
Okay, a motion with a second. Randy, do you want to give us a little bit of explanation?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a routine method of financing the city's special assessment districts. We issue notes to finance them during construction period, and then after we get the project finished, the assessments in place, and the people have the 50-day interest-free period to pay those, we see how much money we get in, and then we issue long-term financing, in this case, 10-year special assessment bonds to pay off three note issues we had in attorney September 1st. So this is a routine special assessment financing to pay off those three notes, and will come due over the next 10 years. The ordinance you had in the agenda packets had a lot of blanks, and at best got a ordinance that's got all those blanks filled in. Probably the most important thing that you're interested in is what the interest rates are, and those are 0.4% on the short end, 2.2% on the long end, with an average coupon of 1.56%. So that's the average interest rate. They have a five-year call. One of the things in the ordinance that Beth has that needs to be changed, it's a small change, that ordinance had a 1.15% hand writer's discount in the pricing, and that should have been 1.1%, so that makes it $245. So, that makes a $245 difference in the issued price of those bonds, what they're being purchased for, I should say, by Ameritas. So, that'll be changed in the final document. There was also a Exhibit A to this ordinance, which you haven't seen before, and that's the city's policies and procedures to maintain the tax exemption on the bonds. There's now a question on the IRS Form 8038, so we file for every bond issue about whether or not you have those procedures in place. So, bond council says that's pretty much a red flag. If you don't have those procedures in place, then you'll end up getting your bonds out of it, so they're recommending everybody adopt such procedures. If you read the fine print in your agenda packet, what's in the agenda packet says City of Kearney, they must have not done a good job with their search and replace when they put that together, but the one Beth has has City of Norfolk in it. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Any questions at all for Randy?
And I do recommend approval on all three readings, since interest rates are based on approval at tonight's meeting.
Okay. Very good. Unless there's any further discussion, I'll look for a short title, Beth.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation various purpose bonds of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of $490,000, for the purpose of paying the costs of improving streets and intersections in paving district numbers 493, 495, 501, and 502, paying the costs of water system improvements in water extension district number 119, directing the application of the proceeds of said bonds, prescribing the form of said bonds, providing for the levy and collection of taxes to pay the same, providing for the sale of the bonds, authorizing deliverance of the bonds to the purchaser, and ordering the ordinance published in pamphlet form.
With that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5219 carries on first reading.
Yeah, and I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5219 on second and third.
Second that, your honor.
All right, a motion with a second, that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5219 on second and third reading. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5219 carries on second and third.
All right, and finally, is consideration of ordinance, of resolution, sorry, number 2012-26, calling $340,000 of outstanding Series 2009 bond anticipation notes, $185,000 of outstanding Series 2010 bond anticipation notes, and $180,000 of outstanding Series 2011 bond anticipation notes for redemption on August 22, 2012.
Your honor, I offer resolution 2012-26.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Do you want to give us some simple explanation of this one, Randy?
Yes, this is the three note issues I talked about when I was talking about the bond issue. The reason this call resolution is necessary is a mature September 1. We're going to sell, close on sale of the bonds on August 22. We'd like to have those two happen simultaneously, so that's why we're calling these a week or so early, to make that coincide with the sale of the bonds.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions?
The only question I have, and maybe I'm missing something, you got $340,000, but you got $185 and $180. Some of that paid off already, or...
We've got a grand total of, in those three bond issues, $705,000 of bonds. We've got $227,000 of cash on hand during that 50-day period from the time you levy the special assessments. We get a lot of payments in on those special assessments, because they need to pay interest.
The interest is paid, okay. That's it.
Good question. Okay. If no further questions, let's vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2012-26 is adopted.
Okay. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, then, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Warrens, for coming out.